Good evening, welcome to the March sixth Barrington Select Board meeting. All the role candidates.
It's in here.
Mr. Caffey Allen's here.
Bailey here.
Mantrick here and Mr. Sikosha is virtual. Are you here, Mr. Sikosha?
Yes.
Okay, Jim, thank you very much. Okay, can I ask you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a quick look at the view of the agenda. Approve the agenda as written. We want to consider moving the appointments to consent agenda. As suggested by Mr. McGyver.
That would be fine. I would not be fine with that.
You want to keep all of them off the consent agenda or just pull off individual ones?
He said, he said.
Well, that's what we're asking to do.
I said no to his, to yes.
Do we want to pull everyone off? I'm just asking the question. What do we want to put?
I don't want to pull. You know which one I want. I don't want on there. So I would, G, not to go. I wanted for discussions.
Okay. And then.
With that, with that exceptions under appointments for items G, not to be, to go along with the agenda as written or under appointments that way. That's what I'll accept.
Okay.
That's my motion.
So I'm not clear. Wait, the motion is to pull all the names and to have the agenda as appears.
As the gender as appears and with another appointments only remove item G for discussion.
Well, right now, appointments are not under the consent agenda.
Right. So you want to put everyone onto the consent agenda except item G.
What we were just doing now and gender review approval is the way it's written right now.
Right.
That's the one we're doing now. We're not doing the consent.
So this would be changes to the consent agenda.
Changes to the agenda.
Would be changes to the consent.
Is to move, yes, to move items.
Item G.
Item seven, A through F to the consent agenda.
J. A through J.
A through J. I voted, I didn't say no because.
Oh, oh, the. Except for, except for the.
Except for G.
Okay, if anyone's, I don't get your net.
We need, we need a second for that.
Second. There's a second.
Thank you.
We all have to agree. The consent agenda, we all have to agree.
I think that there's.
Well, if we don't all agree, we already don't.
Okay, we're good. Okay, so then there was another suggestion that we include on the consent agenda, authorization for Mr. McGyver to sign.
Amendments to the Green Hill Bridge project up to $10,000.
Any objections to that?
Just a little bit like what's coming on.
Yeah, so with the project starting, DOT requires a formal change order amendment process. And so the town's purchasing policy allows the town administrator to authorize expenditures up to $10,000. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation needs to see specific authorization to approve change orders up to that amount more than just the purchasing policy. Good question.
Any objections to that addition to the consent agenda? Very good. Okay. So we've, yes, good.
Great.
Add that on. Okay. Public, public comment. Let me reiterate the rules concerning public comment. Thank you. Visitors are kind of draft. Thanks, public comment up to three minutes. There will be a one time limit to your your comments. Speaker should not accept, should not expect answers from the board chairman or from Mr. McGyver since we haven't had a chance to, we may not have had a chance to discuss the question asked. Public comment is not a two way dialogue between speakers, select board and the town administrator. Again, they have one opportunity. So, excuse me, any on present, yes, man, please.
Tracy Barakoff, forty eight Stones Farm, Ohio. I came by tonight for a couple of reasons. I wanted to thank Mr. Bailey for his years of service to the select board, for the variety boards that he has sat on some with me. And I know that it takes a large amount of our family time away from us to be volunteer elect people throughout the town serving the residents. So I just wanted to stop in and thank him. Thank Gene for putting up with the amount of time that you've contributed to this town. And I wanted to thank you for your help with both veterans and our home population. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Pete. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I also want to encourage everyone to come out on the fourteenth and vote. And I wanted to encourage participation from residents at our library session on the twenty fifth so we can do some planning. And last but not least, for our kids that are going to do their voting at the booths with their parents. I brought some completely non-harcisious, unidentifiable buttons for each of the kids that I wanted to donate to. They say vote, go vote.
That's ridiculous.
Thank you, Tracy.
Any other public comments? If you're, oh, Mr. Mr. Grant. Could you state your name and address, please, for the break? Thank you.
Kent Grant, three seventy two Parker Mountain Road. Part of the agenda is proposed change on the application for people that want to volunteer. I know that you have outlined certain procedures or interests, and I know that one of them is to ensure all, ensure residents are aware of opportunities are afforded the opportunity to serve. You have proposed to ask a number of questions and the change in the way that you do it. I think, I think that you are not affording volunteers a very comfortable position when you want to grill them. Perhaps this is be more in line for somebody that wants to be selectmen. I know some of the things you left out and on the application. What, why would you ask somebody if they were a citizen? Why would you ask somebody that is going to be involved with either the way money is spent or acquisition of tax money to spend? Why would you ask them if they are defaulted on an obligation, something like that? But most importantly, what's wrong with asking somebody if they're a citizen? I know that some of the applications show up, the, on the applications have asked if people have registered to vote. I brought before this town that there's an application of somebody on one of the boards that say they're a registered voter, but that name is not there. It's not their legal name. This town should require a proper legal name for somebody that wants to be a volunteer on a committee. And if encouraged to do so, that that name should be known if they're a registered voter, that should match the voter registry. So that's, that's would be a concern of mine to allow that not to be corrected or to go forward and not have it. You you should look at other towns and their applications, Durham. Some of the people there, I think that's the best town around. And I'm not included in that, but they, they want somebody to attend a meeting. They want you to talk to the chairman. But they don't grill people as I say, grill them or interrogate them. To try to make them feel uncomfortable about volunteering for a position that would be a dirty advisory. I think that it needs to be looked at the way that you are suggesting it should be approached. Further yet, you're talking about April tenth being another, another time for discussion of these changes. And I think you ought to be careful how people that want to be involved. If you want to do something constructive, then do something about term limits. So somebody does have that right that you, you see it very important. Somebody does have that right that they're assured and not afforded an opportunity to participate. They have the same person time at the time of the time again, they're being reappointed or whatever, then that's going to exclude. But if you have, if you have a period or a session that that's open, that somebody else might have an opportunity at that. And if it's not chosen, then that, you know, it can be filled in the way that somebody continues in that position. That's all. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments from those present? For those of you who are on teams, you'll raise your hand and be recognized if you're on your telephone till the star six, wait to be recognized and unmute yourself.
I just want to make one clarification, and Mr. Grant, you may not be aware, but in, in part due to the feedback you provided to the board at their January twenty third meeting, they amended that procedure. And the amendment included a note that applicants must use their legal name to allow verification of residency and or voter registration status. So that was a change the select board made earlier this year. Obviously, they're considering other changes tonight. But I just want to make sure that was clear. The current policy, the current, current procedure includes that requirement.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other public comment? Being none, we will close the first public comment session. There will be another public comment session toward the end of the meeting. First, this is a pretty neat part of what I get to do. Thank you. Hi, look, I have a proclamation that I'll read for you. On the occasion of his retirement from public service, George Bailey, March sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas George Bailey, a Barrington resident and citizen volunteer over the last twenty plus years, has served as a member of various boards and committees, including the Select Board, Stoning Board of Adjustment, Advisory Budget Committee, Conservation Commission, Water Committee, multiple building committees and others. And whereas Mr. Bailey has continuously worked for and supported the betterment of the town on behalf of Barrington's past, current and future residents, businesses, employees and volunteers. And whereas the town of Barrington expresses its sincere appreciation to Mr. Bailey, whose dedication and outstanding performance throughout his varied roles as a citizen volunteer with the town. And now, therefore, we, the Barrington, New Hampshire Select Board, on behalf of the Barrington residents, do hereby present this proclamation to George Bailey as a testimonial to the dedicated service which he has performed over the past twenty plus years, along with our best wishes for his future. And witness thereof, on behalf of the Barrington Select Board and the town of Barrington, I, Select Board Chairman Dan and Mantrick, do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Barrington to be fixed the sixth day of March, two thousand twenty-three. All right, George.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's been rocky road sometimes, but it has been enjoyable. It's been nice to see all the things that were accomplished. And the only regret I have is way back in the twenties is that we weren't able to get the elderly housing, but through, that's the only thing that I'll say that I really worked hard for and I couldn't accomplish. But everything else. But most of all, the friendships that I've made, the acquaintances I've made, it's just unbelievable. It really is. There's nothing like being woken up at two, three o'clock in the morning and somebody that has a complaint. There's nothing beats that. But other than that, it's been wonderful. Thank you all, and thank you again. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And further, in further recognition, we have prepared the plaque. Here you go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Wow.
Yeah. And?
And Tracy hit the nail on the head when she cited the true hero of your twenty years of service, which, which was Gene. And so we, we have these for you to take home to Gene. I'll leave them over here for now. But her nights away from you are worth, worth a lot also.
It is worth. But tonight she's at choir tonight, and I really appreciate that. And I'll, I'll wake her up when I get home. Thank you, everyone. I can't thank you enough. And also it goes for the fellow on the other end, Jim. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, George. It's been a privilege.
Appreciate it.
Oh, man.
How you found this picture of me smiling?
I'm at the meeting, ever more. I, I looked through this, actually Connor looked it up for me. You've been, you've been on boards and committees for this town for over twenty years. First one I have is you were on the Select Board in two thousand and one.
Yep.
Before that, I was on the Conservation Commission before that. Pretty amazing, pretty amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate it from everybody. I appreciate the voters' trust. I really do.
Okay. Yes. So, thank you very much. Mr. Waters, please. Thank you for coming and, and joining us.
Good evening, members of the Select Board and Administrator McGyver, Administrator Cottle. It's nice to be here. It's nice to, nice to be in the new, the new town hall for the first time is when I present this legislative report. I'm Senator David Waters, District Four, Virginia, Barrington, Dover, Rollinsford and Summersworth, and I really appreciate the invitation to come and talk a little bit about legislative activities in general and some of my own bills as, as well. And twenty years. Thank you so much for your service. And it's just so amazing where the town is now, isn't it? I mean, the last couple of decades, the extraordinary progress, the infrastructure that's been built. But I also think that building a sense of community here, and I really hope that, you know, as I do feel in Concord, that we have gotten through such a hard three years. And I think that it is an opportunity for us to, to say, well, we made it, you know, but also to say that we, we really come from the stronger and perhaps we all value each other, not just our differences, but in our, in our differences, that we value each other because that's the strength of the democracy in Barrington's, who have been so hands under this board. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. David.
I couldn't done it alone without the help of Mr. Board members. I want that to be clearly stated. And also comments that the voters have got, even some of those that came at two, three AM in the morning, I'll tell you. But it's well worth it. Thank you.
It's good to be here. And, you know, I know that there are some particular bills that town administrator McGyver said you're checking some questions about, so I'll be kind of refund my remarks. I serve on the Energy and Natural Resources Committee. I serve on Transportation Committee as vice chair, and I'm on the Capital Budget Committee as well. But in the Senate, we kind of like to put our finger in every pie. So certainly we involve the bills outside of those, those committees. Obviously, you know, the three biggest things this year are budget, 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 because of the budget year. And, you know, I, I do think that we will have a good budget. Revenues are strong. And I think there's some real particular budget addressed by the governor and that's being talked about in the House. And then we'll come over to the Senate. There seems to be some consensus on some things that we really need to do together. Certainly, there are some proposals now for increased educational funding, which should help the town. There seems to be some kind of agreement on increasing some forms of, of aid for municipalities. The transportation funding, you know, there's some, some proposals about that. Of course, the ten year highway plan will come for us as well next year. And so there, these are opportunities there. I think also one of the biggest items for us is Medicaid expansion, to renew that and to renew it permanently. And to make sure that that helped, which has been so essential for people before COVID, but particularly during COVID. And I, I did have just look up the numbers, but I think it's probably close to a thousand people in the, in the town of Barrington who are served by Medicaid expansion. And this is just so important to continue that. There's also a bill that you might have heard of called the Mondavis Bill, Senate Bill two thirty-seven. Again, great bipartisan consensus on, on this bill, really do something about childcare crisis and child health and some other things that we can, we can do to help out municipalities. And it really is a workforce to them. Job well, you know, making sure we're taking care of children, but it's also certainly a workforce bill so that people can get, you know, have their children taken care of and they can get to, get to work. And I can come back to, to, to those things and the larger priorities in the budget and elsewhere in a minute. But I just thought I would present to you my full list of bills, and I'm just going to pick and choose a few that I think have secure interest protection to the town. At the very bottom, Senate Bill one twenty-three, I have been working on groundwater issues, particularly P pass and other kinds of potential pollution to groundwater for many years now. I, I created the bill that gave us the fifteen million dollar fund, the bond fund, so that there can be not only municipal water system, but for places like Barrington that individual well owners can get some help if their wells have been polluted by P pass or other, other chemicals. I've just been appointed to serve on the Groundwater Trust Fund Committee and also as an important program to help municipalities out that are facing pollution. And that bill is going to give the needed flexibility to the Department of Environmental Services to take the federal mandates on these, you know, we keep leapfrogging each other on how many parts to, per trillion on the P pass polluting and other things. And this gives the tools that the G E S needs to make sure that we are doing things that we can actually accomplish in New Hampshire that are cost effective and actually get the job done, whatever kind of federal structure that they provide to us are. I'm also working on mental health education in our schools. I'm sure you've all read about the kind of crisis of of youth mental health issues. And if you've talked to any, any teachers or your, you know, school administrators, you know how many students compounded by, certainly by the, the COVID epidemic, but, you know, correlated to all kinds of issues. Substance, substance use, which increased during the pandemic and then kind of issues of bullying. And the kind of list of things that young people go through. And so this bill will make sure that mental health education is included and health education actually gets delivered to, to the students. And I think this will be an important tool to help our, help our children out. I've always been a lot with workforce training programs, which could free and technical education, create an advisory group on that several years ago, and I'm very hard to increase funding, particularly for tuition and transportation, which would help out the town of Barrington, sending its students over to the C T Es in, in the, the schools that that have them. And this all particularly addresses the rising offshore wind industry. I'm the Chair of New Hampshire's Offshore Wind and Port Development Commission. Offshore wind is coming to the Gulf of Maine. We have the Gulf of Maine Task Force that Governor Sununu requested Bureau of Ocean Energy Management to create a couple of years ago. I serve on that as well. And the proposal is the potential of developing about three point two or so gigawatts of power through wind as a kind of initial build out in the Gulf of Maine. That's about three Seabrooks worth. So we're talking about maybe a million and a minute and a half homes that could be powered from that source. And it's a three to five billion dollar construction phase and then a twelve to sixteen billion dollar supply chain. So offshore wind up and down the East Coast and the Gulf of Maine, sometimes referred to as the Saudi Arabia of wind because it's some of the strongest, the most reliable wind resources really on the, on the planet. So we've got to be ready. I want these to be New Hampshire jobs. I want there to be investment by this industry in New Hampshire. So we need to book that developing workforce training centers here in New Hampshire and getting some of that investment that's going into other states to come into, into, into New Hampshire. And also the particular area of marine trades, we need to create marine trades programs, not only for the Lynx region for small engines, but also marine trades programs in the C T Es for what happens along the seacoast as, as well. Senate Bill one fifty-three, we are having extraordinary difficulties with recruitment and retention of police officers, fire, E M Ts. And I'm sure that you know this, I mean, Barrington is just such superb police and fire and E M T. And we need to make sure that we have the pipeline there and then can keep the people. We, you know, problems, we train officers so well in the state. If then, hey, look, they, you know, they get hired away. And this, this is a difficult problem. So what I brought here with the bill is to say that if you are working for the actual police department or fire department or E M T, you'll get free tuition at community college system. And because we don't pay the full cost, the fire academy, the way we do for the police academy, we will cover the full cost. We'll top that off, what's coming from other sources, as long as you come to work and people through it in New Hampshire municipalities. So I think that this will do two things. It's good for recruitment and retention, but also it's a way to upscale folks so that they might take something in I T, they might take accounting, whatever, whatever it is that might serve their department and their town and the complex work of, of police and fire, fires these days. That's what this bill will do. Also related to Barrington is being able to use the criteria of biodiversity and to, as a tool that can be used to evaluate land for preservation and how that is preserved. And, you know, Barrington is such treasures of poison, preserved by self and nature conservancy and and others, and they're one of the gems of this town. So how is it you're going to make sure these, these very special places are healthy for our residents? I do a lot on renewable energy and on energy needs. We are recognizing the extraordinary increase in costs to residents, but also to municipal governments because of power increases. So, you know, they always say when's the best time to plant a tree? Well, it's either twenty years ago or today, right? And so I, I think that the work that I've been trying to do is to make sure that we prepare our future and get the investments we need here. Grid modernization, we'll look at big things like how we're going to onshore all that power and how we're going to have a grid that is resilient and can serve the state's needs. But also how do we make sure that the, the new world of distributed energy resources, whether it's through solar or biomass or wind, how, how, how are we going to account for that? So that those kind of investments can be, be made and that we kind of in a sense bring power to the people to kind of liberate municipalities and individuals and businesses to generate power on site and be able to have it, to use it and have it go into the grid and get a fair, a fair price for that. I mean, also, we, to do these kinds of things in a modern grid, we have to have transactive energy, which means you have to have price signals that are available at suitable increments so people can understand what kind of price is. And I think that one thing looking to the future here is that if people have battery storage, particularly if you start to have tens of thousands of electric vehicles, you can aggregate all those batteries, put powder in when it's cheap and sell it back out into the grid when it's costly. And that can be monetized and, and be a resource for municipalities, their own fleets, but also for, for individuals as, as well. The next big thing on the horizon is green hydrogen. So that's why I've sent a bill one sixty-seven. Hydrogen, there's tens of billions of dollars of investment money available in the Federal Transportation Act and in the I R A Act and for pilot programs and also for funding for developing hydrogen infrastructure. Hydrogen can be used as a storage fuel so that if the wind isn't blowing or the sun isn't shining, you can put the energy to create hydrogen and then draw, use the hydrogen to produce electricity so it can go. and then draw, use the hydrogen to produce electricity. So it can go back into the grid. It's also the ideal as a heavy transportation fuel for your, for your semi-trails and, uh, very heavy equipment. That's probably more cost effective than running off of hydrogen rather than electric, uh, vehicles. And it also, um, can be blended into natural gas. And there's also opportunities to, you know, transfer our plants now that are running on gas and coal uh, to a cheaper and non-carbon source like, source like hydrogen. So this bill is gonna say New Hampshire's open for business. Who wants these jobs? You know, this investment, but that's gonna be the, it's the future of our, of a cheaper energy uh, supply. Um, just for a couple more, uh, I mentioned electric vehicles. And, um, the more we have of those, the less we have going in the gas tax, right? The gas tax is, uh, is starting to decline. And, um, if we have sixty thousand vehicles, maybe more that are electric on the actual roads by twenty thirty. And we know the auto companies said they're not building conventional fuel vehicles much after twenty thirty and not at all under twenty thirty five. That's what most of the auto companies are saying. So there's gonna be a lot of these, how we're gonna pay for roads. So this bill does say for surcharge, electric vehicles, and we put that into the, um, into the highway fund. That's the constitutional we have it and, um, also pay for some charging infrastructure. Um, now lastly, uh, I've done a lot of work on harm reduction, uh, recovery, um, the opioid crisis. It's stayed hard. It's hit, it's hit Barrington hard. Um, so there is, uh, this concept of harm reduction is that, you know, yes, let's have recovery. Let's, uh, try to, you know, get people into, into recovery and to help make sure young people can get started down these, these paths. But, um, if people are pursuing substances, there's harm reduction we can do. We have needle exchange programs. We can provide Fentanyl test strips so that people can know if the drug that they may be planning on taking to kill them. Um, we also can have safe supplies so that we don't, aren't, you know, the diseases like, um, H I V and Hep C, which, you know, are heart, heart infections, which you're talking about three to five hundred thousand dollars, which the state is gonna pay for or can pay fifty cents or nickel, you know, clean, in some range. So this is what harm reduction is. And this bill kind of comprehensively embeds that in, you know, in the ways that, that in which we deal with substance, uh, seriously. Um, so let me, let me just stop, stop there. Um, and, uh, sorry to go on so long, but I just said I can give you a kind of two minutes of an overview. And I know that there are some particular questions about this.
Mr. Bailey.
Thank you. I have a few, uh, comments and questions. Thank you. So much for coming here. It's very informative. One of the, uh, questions I asked you on Espy about it now, I, uh, am a member of American Legion. One of the things that, that I noticed through the years is that when we put the flags out, there, uh, seems to be, the measurements taken for the seventy-five foot, uh, setback that they have for the edge of that is there. So you can't build any closer, what have you, what people fail to realize, because we are talking about slavery. Slaves were built, were buried outside the perimeter. I know you noticed. Is this bill gonna do anything to protect the ground that they're in? Or not, if not, I would ask that you would consider something like that to do that.
Yeah, thank you for your question. And, you know, any, any burial is protected, but do we notice that? Yeah, a lot of them. And sometimes they are, they're found or somebody, you know, builds, not picking substances there. And guess what? They find, they find graves. And, uh, so this bill, um, builds on existing protections. But what it says that if you, um, if there are graves or there are graves that might be disturbed or have been disturbed, that are for people who were buried in a period of slavery. And I selected those because they likely do not have any choice over things. And as you say, were buried in kind of circumstances that represented that they were considered property then, not as human beings. And so that this says, if this is the case, you will consult with the descendant community or it's, or it's a representative of the descendant community um, for, to, about respectful treatment of the remains.
Yeah, just some of the, some of the readings that I've gone through, I've seen that some of the slaves did serve during the, uh, revolution more, but they still got the same thing, young little.
Uh, thank you for, thank you for, for mentioning that. I think that's, uh, it's an important way of respecting, you know, we need to respect all, all people's bearing grounds, but it's, it's something neglected over time.
And the, the other question I have is concerning one twenty-three. And, uh, is anything going to be done with that for the, uh, properties that, uh, were involved in World War Two dumping? Because as you know, we've got several areas in the area here of Rochester, uh, and, uh, with us here and from the north. We have several of those, uh, dump sites. And is there, is there anything going, going to be done, uh, for future, uh, protection?
Well, I, let me follow up on that because I believe that we have been placed funding for these kinds of issues. If they affect surface waters, then yes, the Department G E S with, sometimes with federal funding, but also state funding. We do have cleanup funds.
I, 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 I realize that some of these are below surface water and sometimes, uh, individuals, uh, will drill a well or something like that, then they'll get that, uh, product of, of the ground's water.
Let me, let me follow up on that, but I do believe there are protections done place for, for groundwater. I, I mentioned surface water because that's where sometimes it comes up for, for groundwater, yes.
And my, my last one, I'm gonna give everybody else a chance, is one fifty-three. And the only thing I would make a suggestion on one fifty-three for, uh, uh, fire, fire and police is to maybe make a, uh, payment on the end of their retirement, help them on the end of retirement for their medical payments. So as they don't pay for it like they do now. And that's, that's the only suggestion I have. And again, I want to thank you for, uh, company. I really appreciate it.
Well, I, I thank you so much. And, you know, I, I served on the, um, the sale, uh, retirement commission, which looks at the whole fund and all of these issues. And we've had several bills about trying to do just what you're proposing to help with the post deployment benefits and, and those costs. And there is some movement this session in finding some, some funding to, to help, help folks out. Um, but it, you know, it's complicated because anything, any funding we try to dedicate to these areas um, comes back down to municipality because of the percentage that they have to pay. So that's always the kind of push pull over, over these retirement and medical benefits.
Yeah, because this, this board has worked very hard to maintain the police force that we have and the fire departments. But it's worked hard on that. And that was just another way of saying, hey, we're gonna think about you in the end. We want you to stay.
Well, I would just comment too. I was in the legislature, I was in the House actually, when the decision was made to cut back on retirement benefits for public employees. And I, 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 I think it was, created a very difficult situation. It created two-tier situations. Um, I think it exacerbated the differential between looking at New Hampshire and being a similar employee in other states where you get better, better retirement health benefits. And, uh, in some ways, we've been trying to find some ways to make up for that in the last ten years. Certain, which are a difficult problem because the town does what the panel can do, but it's, it's not, it's not something you can control.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Scotia is online. He has a question or a comment?
Yes. Yeah. Um, I, you know, I, I understand, uh, the whole wind and solar thing pretty decent. But where in other states where they're having the whales wash up on the shore, is there any added, uh, threat that that would happen up here as well?
Thanks for the question on that. The research that's been done on the whales off in New Jersey indicates that that's been from ship strikes by cargo ships and it's not related to the offshore wind industry. But that, that said, um, in the Gulf of Maine, uh, because we have endangered species and, um, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and, uh, New Hampshire um, is responsible for ensuring that there are not adverse effects on these species. Cause it's, it's, the Gulf of Maine is a complex place, a rich fishery and a rich breeding ground. We have to make sure that the whales and other species are, are protected. Um, I, you know, the news stories we had, there hasn't been follow up on that. And, and, uh, the report is that this is not related to offshore wind. And on, in terms of the Gulf of Maine too, is that these are floating towers, you know, forty, fifty miles offshore. And so they are tethered by very large cables, like sometimes maybe twelve to twenty inches across. And so there's, those kinds of cables are not an issue for whales because there's no entanglement, uh, in them. And they're big enough so the whales know they're there and can avoid it. At least that's the science at this point. I passed the bill last year, uh, you know, as you know, state water just go three miles off and federal water is about two hundred miles. And the feds regulate three to two hundred miles. But there is a thing called consistency in federal statute that a state can declare consistency, meaning we can regulate out to two hundred miles if we have an economic interest. So I passed the bill saying we want to declare our economic interests because our fishing people and, and environmental interests out to two hundred miles so that we get a, we get a bite at the apple there when it comes to regulating how offshore wind is gonna be developed. But thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gibson, Staff Allen.
I just had a comment. Uh, thank you for your work on Medicaid expansion and making that permanent. So we don't have to look at this every five years. Because it seems like that might have the most direct, immediate impact on people.
Well, thank you. And, you know, what's good, a- as this has developed over years, and I was there at the inception to try to get us, get on board with it. And it was complicated process, but we got there and, um, but we had the, and then we, we had to do it in the context of, of a renewable. That was still, we're gonna get that, get it passed, but it's successful. And what was this, was central to it was to find funding sources so that it was not putting undue burdens on taxpayers. And, um, we have been able to do that. And moving forward, uh, there's a path for that in this bill. So I think that it's gonna be one of the remarkable things. You may see a twenty-four to zero vote in the Senate, if possible.
I would be grateful. Who knew, who knew you could do that?
Really does, because that, that's what some people expect of us, to solve problems.
Yeah, excellent. Uh, I would, I would like to echo, uh, Mr. Bailey's comments on one twenty-three. I think retention is a, is a huge issue, not just the recruiting, although that's certainly a huge issue. But once we have people, uh, retention, so hopefully this bill will include a lot of emphasis on, on retention. So some emphasis on retention as well as recruit.
My conversation with officers and with chiefs and others, it's that, you know, um, these are increasingly complex jobs.
Yeah.
And so if you feel you can grow, might make it possible to receive promotions. But then also the education might prepare you for your career after public service. Because, you know, twenty, twenty-five years and it's, it's a hard job. And so people do look to their second career and it's education. I say, gee, if I stay in New Hampshire, I'm gonna be able to get this educational benefit. I'm gonna be able to, you know, grow in my job, but then I, I would be ready for the next career to do. So I hope, you know, I, we've gotta do something for our police and fire. We just, you know, we really have to help our police out in the state.
Yeah, but it, it's, it's a hard fiscal job. There's, there's a, an age limit to this thing that you, you can do. So I think that, that further enhances, uh, this additional training to your next life. Um, I have another question or another concern, which I don't see you mentioning in particular. We had some effort to try to get more mental health resources to, for police, particularly for the nine eleven, nine eleven people. I know there are what, nine districts in the, in the country, uh, or in the state rather, uh, to do that. But I was wondering if there are bills or consideration of bills that would enhance that or increase that. I think that's a certainly a way to, uh, reduce, well, make, make the police job easier because a lot of the concerns that police have are not truly police. Things are mental health issues, uh, social issues. Not just mental health, but, but social programs. And I certainly would encourage, um, you in, in the Senate and you personally, but certainly in the Senate to increase, um, some efforts from the state to make those programs, um, more available and work better closer, closer to home, so to speak, rather than just these nine rather large districts, which may make it difficult for mental health people to get out and help the police, um, do this.
You know, I, I, I'm recalling, I think there is a bill to provide some of the services because of the, the, the stress of the job.
Yes, sir. Any other, yes, sir, you got a question?
I'll just make one comment about New Hampshire retirement and recruitment and retention specific to police and fire. And I think this is an important, um, it's important for all of us to keep in mind, but especially at the State House. I know this year with the budget, there's more conversation about the state contribution to New Hampshire retirement system, the employer share. Last year, uh, municipalities received seven point five percent refund for police and fire and the schools, uh, for their teachers as well. The eighty percent of what the town pays for police and fire, of course, goes to fund the unfunded liability. And for an officer that, you know, so police and fire is thirty-three percent of what we pay them, we pay into the system. And it would be one thing if we could look them in the face and say, hey, we're gonna pay you twenty-five dollars an hour, but we're gonna pay another thirty-three percent into your retirement. But we can't say that in earnest because only twenty percent of that goes to the benefit that they will receive. The eighty percent goes to the benefits of prior. And you mentioned that the tough decision that was made back in two thousand and eleven with the reduction of benefits. But of course, there was a crisis where we're still paying for that now. And I think, I don't know what the answer is, but with recruitment and retention, certainly if we could pay our police officers and firefighters more, we would be able to recruit them from private sector alternatives and retain them, um, just, you know, simply based on wages. And, uh, for a municipality and for the taxpayers in Barrington, it's difficult to do that when we have such a liability for New Hampshire retirement system. We pay an officer twenty-five dollars an hour. We pay thirteen thousand dollars in retirement benefits just to the unfunded liability, not, not to them specifically. I'd love to be able to take that thirteen thousand dollars and pay it to the police officers or firefighters so that we can recruit them and retain them. Like I said, I know there isn't an easy answer, but I think it's important to keep that in mind because that is a huge recruitment and retention barrier that we have to be able to afford hiring, um, on both police and fire. So I encourage you to keep that in mind.
I think that you, you know, you, you identified the painful issue and that there were terrible decisions made in nineteen nineties that really compromised our retirement fund. And so we've had to be trying to make up for it. So we established the thirty years plan to deal with that. Um, you know, the market's been down last year or so, uh, but, you know, when we were on the Senate pension division, we looked at the projections of where we're heading. I think it's, the fund is being very well managed now. Um, but there is a curve there, you know, where we're, we're still climbing up that curve of how much is going in to deal with the unfunded liability. But, you know, right around now is when we're supposed to get over the top of that curve. And that's the problem with amortization over thirty years, right? You, you pay heavy at the beginning, but we should get to that point where it is gonna be on the trend line towards zero, which would mean that the municipality portion of what is going in to deal with the, you know, mistakes of the past and to get that fund fully funded, um, will, will occur. But it's, you know, it's nice to talk about, you know, it's like saying, well, you could have dessert in ten years.
Right.
You know, and, um, and this is why I've been a little anxious about some of the proposals to, you know, to increase the benefits now as much as, you know, as much as I, I think the argument is made that we, they need to be. But on the other hand, we've gotta, we've gotta have a balanced fund. You know, it is, it's painful. We have to maintain that, that discipline. And I, but I, you know, that, I mean, that's, that's, that's the situation we're in. And, and you identify the, particularly over the last couple of years, the problem we're having with the starting salads, right? And, or, or, you know, look at the, I mean, the, the state police right now, seventy vacancies and it's only forcing about three hundred and eighty people. I mean, and it's just, means a lot of towns are getting their coverage at night because the state police not there. So this is, you know, all across the, all across the system.
Right.
We are really, really pug against it on movement and attention. So, um, that's a turd.
Thank you.
I guess one last thing, and I think it's coming out of the House, the bill to make Stratford County, um, commissioners, the three commissioners selected or elected by district as opposed to at large for the, for the whole system. And, and Rochester and Dover, obviously, uh, and Summers, where Dover. And Summers worked over, Summers worked. Needs something, but. Since the three commissioners come from those areas. At this point. It would be, I think, useful uh, for those communities outside of those two larger communities. Specifically Barrington, but certainly the, the other smaller communities um, that make up Stratford County. We would, we would certainly favor. That bill. I think it's coming out of the House.
It's two seventy, House Bill two seventy.
Yeah, I don't know what's going to happen to that in the House. And if it gets out of the House, we'll take, we'll see it in the Senate, so.
Understand.
Interesting proposal.
It's like a commitment from you, but that's okay. Okay. Anybody, any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Gibson.
Senator Waters, thanks for being here. And thanks for your work with energy. Uh, Barrington has a new uh, energy committee.
Yeah.
And there's a, a variety of things that they're working on. And one of them is uh, looking, exploring the community powered coalition. And, and the way to offer choice to our residents and to potentially save them a lot of money on energy. Uh, any thoughts on where that's headed for the state, the different communities?
Yeah, I, I tell you, I, I think that community power coalition is just an extraordinary development. And I think it has the potential to really. Give municipalities control over their costs now because they'll be able to aggregate and negotiate. But one of the reasons I'm doing Senate Bill one sixty-six is the, the next step is going to be these communities developing power resources. And so if Barrington wants to do a large solar field, there was a potential around doing something at the toll and landfill and I, there's. Their potential there. And so those kinds of investments are the next steps here. And there are investors out there who are interested in making those investments so that. That would mean that you would have your own. A, a substantial power supply. I mentioned the aggregation of electric vehicles. I mean, there's a lot of things that could happen. Um, if we can get grid modernization and the time signals, that then you really will have a control over your power sources. That you wouldn't have had before. So I, I mean, right now about a fifth of the state. Heading towards a quarter of the state is in this. And I, I think it's a vehicle that's going to really. Really transform everything about the energy economy. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, Dover's in and uh. I'm really glad to hear about Barrington looking at it. I, I've worked very closely with the development of that and Cook Beal.
Yep.
Um, is an extraordinary leader on this and uh, I, I, I think it's. Going to be, I think it's going to be good things and money, you know, money saving for the, for Barrington folks.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much for coming. I really appreciate it.
Didn't hit all the ones you had on your list. Just be in touch and I'll, I'll take it forward along.
You, the board will continue to monitor, I trust, uh, and, and we'll, we'll follow up as anything actionable gets closer.
Well, it's good to see you. You know, I'll have myself.
Thank you very much. It's really, really good to have you every time.
Town meeting and all that, yeah.
See you then.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't see anyone from the school board here. The school board has not met uh, since our last meeting. Uh, they meet tomorrow, so. We will move on consent agendas. Make a motion to.
And this includes the N H D O T authorization amendment authorization, just a reminder.
I'm sorry.
Yes, it does. That's included on the consent agenda. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think that we approve that sentence as written.
Sorry, a second, Mr. Gibson, a second. Uh, we'll have to do this by a roll call, Mr. Gibson.
Uh, Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Secotion. Mr. Secotion.
You're muted if you're trying.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was on the, the page looking at the agenda.
Man, strike aye. And we have a. Did, did you vote aye?
I heard that.
So I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, very good. The consent agenda approved. Appointments. Um. We need to do these individually, so. Any? Any questions concerned about the smart?
Done.
There's a motion.
Motion to approve Linda Markley's tax clerk.
Bailey, second. Uh, Mr. Mr. Gibson. Vote, please.
Uh, Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Secoshai, very good. Thanks, Jim. Town Treasurer, Mr. Peter Royce.
Make a motion to reappoint Peter Royce as a town treasurer with a term expiring in twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Moving seconded, Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye. Mr. Secoshai, I assume.
Oh, yes, Secoshai.
Thank you. Deputy Town Treas- Treasurer, Tiffany Cottle.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Tiffany Cottle as deputy town treasurer with a term expiring in twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Moving seconded, Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
There you go. Library Trust, I'm sorry. Library trustee Melanie Haley.
Like to make a motion to reappoint uh. Melanie Haley as library trustee alternate with a term expiring in twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Gibson, seconded. Vote.
Aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
Uh, Conservation Commission, Ann Melvin.
I make a motion for acceptance of the appointment of Ann Melvin.
As a alternate to the.
As an office of conservation commission. Thank you very much.
Expiring in twenty twenty-six.
Yes, that's correct.
That's what he meant.
That's exactly what I meant.
I have a second for that.
I second it.
Miss Capello, a second. Vote.
Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
Very good, thank you. And um. For the Conservation Commission, Mr. Cassidy, Daniel Cassidy.
Make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Make a, to reappoint Daniel Cassidy as a Conservation Commission member with a term expiring in twenty twenty-six.
I'll second it.
Seconded.
Gibson, aye.
Gibson, aye. Captain, yellow.
Oh, aye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye. Secotion. I thought so. Very good. And Scott Heron for alternate.
I move that we appoint Scott Heron as a Conservation Commission alternate with a term expiring in two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Move a second.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
Thank you. Jack Gail.
Make a motion to accept uh, Mr. Jack Gail with, for a term that expires. Uh, for, as a member, to reappoint Jack Gail as a member of the Conservation Commission member with expiration of uh, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded, Gibson, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
And Recreation Commissioner, Brian Stolpe.
Make a motion to appoint Brian Stolpe as a Recreation Commission member with a term of expiring in twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
Seconded. Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
Thank you. Stratford Regional Planning Commissioner, Matthew Towns.
Uh, I move that we appoint Matthew Town to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission with the term that expires in July of two thousand. And I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Uh, the term expiring two thousand and twenty-seven.
Second. Any discussion?
I just think that we're making a uh. I personally feel that he will not be beneficial for the town. That's the extent I will go.
Okay. Any other comments? Vote, oh, vote, yes, Captain.
I think uh, Matt Town has that expertise to represent the town well on the regional planning.
Any other comments? Questions concerned? Vote.
Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely no.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai, no.
Thank you. Happy past planning board. Bob Cassier.
Um, I move that we appoint Bob Cassier as um, we appoint the same board. Uh, with a term that expires in two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. It's moved and seconded.
Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
Thank you. Mr. Hackett, Robert Buddy Hackett.
Make a motion to reappoint uh, Robert Buddy Hackett as a planning board member with a term expiring in twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Man, strike aye.
Barely aye.
Secoshai, I thank you. Transportation and Recycling Center Review Committee. Uh, Deborah Plough.
Mr. Chair, two small corrections in this category. Um, Ms. Pluff and Ms. LaPierre um, are actually proposed to be alternates. Um, I have them listed as full members. And so I would ask that you consider making their appointment as alternates, um, not as full members.
We have motion, Mr. Plough, Ms. Pluff, excuse me.
Uh, make a motion to appoint Ms. Clough. As a transfer member alternate. Term expiring in twenty twenty-six. Or does that have to be one year?
Uh, alternative to one year.
Yeah.
I think that's expire in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
I think we did a couple other. Alternates of twenty twenty-six. Okay, suddenly I had you.
Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
Um. Mona LaPierre.
I move that we appoint Mona LaPierre uh, to a full appointment on the transfer and recycling center. Uh, with a term expiring in two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
An alternate expiring in twenty twenty-four. That I heard.
Uh, no, so I said that.
Sorry, that was one of the, those two, yeah, yeah, so. Just those two. Pluff and LaPierre.
So I will restate this. Um, I, I move that we accept uh, Mona LaPierre as an alternate. Position to the transfer station and recycling center with a term that expires in uh, one year from now, so two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Sorry again about that error.
Vote.
Gibson, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
I barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
Thank you. Uh, Aubrey, Aubrey Pat Mead.
This is just for discussion tonight.
As they just put in, so. We'll address that the next time around.
Do we need to uh, go back and relook Scott Heron I nominated and I said that was for a term expiring in two thousand and twenty-six, but that was an alternate appointment. So.
Yeah.
Why does that say two thousand?
I can double check. Um, there are some alternate appointments um, that can extend beyond a year. Um, I. Um, you're welcome to either make it a year or I'll follow up at the next meeting to make sure that there aren't any requirements other than just past practice in Barrington.
So did we, library trustee, I think I might have made that motion for Melanie Haley. So she also, did I say that correctly? That she, her term expires in two thousand and twenty-four.
So the, I know that one for sure. That's written into statute. That can only be for one year at a time.
So I'm just asking Tiffany, can you, did I say two thousand and twenty-four? Yeah. For Mona? Probably.
No, no, for Melanie Haley.
Melanie Haley. Um, I didn't change it, so it must have been twenty twenty-four. Okay. And then the next one, Ann Melvin. Um. So she should be two thousand and twenty-four or she's a two thousand and twenty-four.
So like I said, I can, we do, we have had historically alternate positions extend beyond a year. Uh, most of them do expire in a year. And what I can research is whether that's just past practice in Barrington or where there are statutory requirements for that.
Because I would ask that you, you consider, well, I won't be here, but I'd ask that you would consider that we had that for the first time. For one year, then after that, it would be for three years. I think that's.
That's the past practice that you remember? Okay. And these would be reappointment.
You'll report back.
I will report back. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, Z B A. I'm gonna look. Page six.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Arthur Lapierre as a zoning board of adjustment member with a term expiring in twenty twenty-six. I hope I pronounced his name correctly.
Andre.
Andre.
That's what I said, Andre Lapierre.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Uh, vote.
Aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
And finally, uh, Alexander Samoko.
I think I want to deploy. Alexander Samoko as a zoning board of adjustment member. With a term expiring in twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I second.
Thank you. Vote.
Son, aye.
Captain, yellow eye.
Barely aye.
Man, strike aye.
Secoshai.
Thank you. All right, moving on staff reports. Mr. McIver, please.
Yes, thank you. Here we are, the first meeting in March. Uh, and so I have listed in my report, the work anniversaries. These are folks that we've hired in March over the years. Um, I'll read through them, starting at the top. These are the longest tenured employees hired in March. Stephen Paul. He's been with the Highway Department for twenty-three years now. Uh, one of our esteemed members of your winter maintenance crew that has kept Barrington's roads. Uh, clear, dry and black through the recent storms. Uh, so appreciate his continued service. Our assistant fire chief, Eric Lindsey, started in the town twenty-two years ago. Uh, Peter Royce is treasurer, started eighteen years ago. Larry Kuhn, also in the Fire Department, seventeen years ago. Will Lenharth in the Fire Department, seventeen years ago. Uh, Amanda Barber, Police Sergeant, started in town seven years ago. Certainly talking about recruitment and retention. Appreciate her continued service to the town. Uh, and I'm glad to say that our town planner started one year ago this month. Uh, she, she has had a very busy year. Uh, nobody knows that better than Joyce with the uh, regulation updates, the zoning amendments and countless cases. Um, and she has taken it all in stride. Appreciate her service. And Ian Watt started in the Fire Department one year ago.
Thank you all for your service. Especially the longevity of many of you. Thank you. Hopefully, hopefully the one-year people will have, be able to get their twenty-three, twenty-five years.
That's the goal.
Ballot session.
The uh, no- another plug for the second half of our town meeting, uh, the second session, which is voting on March fourteenth. So by now, I hope most residents in the town of Barrington have identified some piece of information relative to voting on March fourteenth. I've listed in the town report or in my um, town administrator report, uh, some of the detailed information. These are web pages that we have available. Um, everybody has seen, or you all have seen the voter guides. We have that available online. We also have printed copies available throughout town. We've received a lot of positive feedback from residents. Does take a little while to, to get through cover to cover, uh, but better to do that ahead of time. Um, end of last week, the postcards hit mailboxes. And we've received a lot of calls already, calls to the town clerk's office about absentee ballots. Now we have a Q R code to that PDF of the voter guide. Uh, a lot of folks have accessed that web link. Um, and again, reminding folks to vote. We have the big sign up on uh, the property next to Community Way, letting folks know that Article Nine. Relates to the town center. Uh, they should educate themselves and come out to vote. We have the small vote signs, uh, among other efforts. Uh, we've continued our uh. Focus on social media of one article every day, so that will continue through till this Friday. Um, highlighting each article that the, that residents will experience. Uh, when they hit the polls on March fourteenth. The. Uh, select board uh, is asked to coordinate with the chair relative to their availability on election day. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I tend to, the only person I've heard from uh, is Ms. Capello. And I propose, unless you have objections, I'd start, I'd do it the way we did the last one. Um. With Mr. Secoshia first, Jim first from eight to ten. Uh, and Joyce from ten to twelve thirty. And um, George, how about you twelve thirty to four?
Much as it pains me, I'll. Much as it pains me how to twelve-thirty to four.
You're a good man.
No, not. I just got stuck.
Yeah, well, I'll trade you, but I was gonna, I was gonna do four to six-thirty and then Rob.
Yep.
Rob, come in at.
I'll probably come in earlier, like before to state.
Fine. That's good. If that's all right with everyone. Without objection.
Fantastic. It's settled. So also, and very glad to add buttons to our offering for the kids voting, but we have started the push for the kids voting experience that we have planned. Can't tell you how excited we are about this. There's so many kids that come to the polls and we'll have something for them to do. We're still collecting suggestions, name suggestions for the van and the dump truck. So this week, staff will review the suggestions that have been made, whittle it down to probably five or six to let the kids choose from on Election Day. A couple of other updates. We have Barrington's old wooden ballot box from the Historical Society that will have the kids putting their ballots into up on the stage. We have a backdrop. It's like a media backdrop that we have, which we expect will serve many future purposes. But we'll have set up so parents can get pictures of their kids after after voting. We're gonna have a big sign at the registration. And their their voter check-in will be signing their name on the big paper sign, so we have that as a little.
Say one year, a year?
Well, probably one each year. Yeah, probably one each year, but that'll be there, you know.
Any of towns doing this? This is really cool. Like, is this Foster Center?
They, yes, they are aware. I'm not positive they'll run something before, although I've asked, but they promised that they would, they would report on the results. And I also dropped a line to NUR. Usually they're out and about on Election Day, just getting, you know, stock footage and stuff like that, but I gave them a plug saying, hey, if you want to see something different, something interesting, stop by Barrington and, you know, we'll show you to have fun on Election Day. Yeah, I don't know. And and again, it's important to give credit where credit's due. I heard about this idea from Jack Gail. He credited, I think at the time, a community he became, he was aware of in like Vermont that had done it. And so maybe he has somebody else to give credit to, but that's where I heard about it. And it was, it was originally brought up as like a get the vote, get out the vote campaign. But I don't think we need an excuse to give kids some civic experience, so.
Pictures and some video of this.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Yep. Now, yeah, that was the backup plan. That's what I plugged to NUR also is we'll take pictures and videos and be glad to share, so. See how cool we are.
If nothing else, once the kids, there's a school, I think you said the school was going to put the word out on that. If that happens, maybe kids will be dragging their parents into votes, so that'll help.
And so that's the, that's the slogan. You'll see on these graphics and credit to Tiffany on this, but adults bring your kids, kids bring your adults, right? So. That.
Maybe get some decisions of those they can weigh in on.
Yes, so what we, so a couple things. We have engaged the school, all three levels of the school, in schools in Barrington to help promote and get kids interested and paying attention. Some of the classroom teachers have taken the opportunity to get name ideas from their students and have passed those along. We're already starting to plan for next year, engaging the school earlier on to start making some decisions, engaging the leadership program and the Recreation Department to help with some of the coordination and planning. So we're hoping that this is the first of many, and it's really a pretty simple thing, but we're hoping that it'll have a pretty big impact and shot a spotlight on civic involvement starting at a young age, so. So tell everybody you know with somebody under eighteen. Okay, next, the, a reminder about Select Board reorganization. So this is our last meeting of of this session, if you will. So the March twentieth will be the first meeting of the new session. And so the first order of business per the Select Board's rules and procedures is selection of officers. And so be prepared to come in and make that decision first thing. And whoever is selected as Chair traditionally takes over the meeting and leads the meeting the rest of the way through. The second point of that is one of the first orders of business for the new Chair or or the selected Chair, I guess would be a more appropriate way to say it, is assigning committee assignments to Select Board members. And so I have asked in here that the Chair make that decision by the April tenth meeting, and so be prepared to go to the selected Chair with the boards or committees you're interested in in participating in. Any questions about those procedural steps upcoming? Fantastic. So that's all I have.
Who's got all?
Um, well, you can expect DocuSign request on Thursday for the big old pile of oaths from all the appointments you just went through.
Again.
And then as a tradition that we started a couple of years ago, I'm going to ask all of you to sign one town report.
That'll be the official town report.
Goes to Historical Society.
No, it goes to me.
Sign and duplicate and they'll give it to the Historical Society.
We can give them another one.
Where do you want us to sign?
Um, on that page, yes, please. Thank you.
So how many years have we done it?
I think, I think this is the third.
This will be the third.
I think. I know, I definitely last year, and I think I found another one today, so.
So.
Nice job.
I'd like, I'd also like people to sign my copy, if you will.
Like a yearbook?
Yeah. Like a yearbook, yeah. Like a, you know, most life of a.
Like a page?
Okay, there on the front. I don't hear those.
And I'm glad to share, the Select Board Chair did receive issue number one. He was at the Town Hall when they got delivered. Tiffany herself signed the first copy, indicated it was issue number one, and left it with the Chair, so. New, new tradition there, too.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Okay.
Actually, sorry.
Updated appointments, board procedures. One of the things that was mentioned the last time we talked on this is maybe it would be useful to know more about whether the you know, what, what particular interest was that it doesn't, it's not covered completely by by the by the application itself. And.
Don't let that one get lost.
No.
If it gets passed down.
Lock and key. Thank you.
Just gotta remind Jim to commit inside it.
Jim, you got that? Jim, are you in there? Gotcha. Please come in when you can. When your dog's better.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm really sorry about that. That is too bad. I hope, hope your dog's getting better.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm sure you. Uh, so. This was just for discussion, to see other people's thoughts on this, whether we needed need a little more effort for, huh? I would, I would suggest that perhaps not a select, not necessarily a select board member, but maybe the Chairman of that particular board or commission might be the person to do that interview and process. That's a thought, I know.
At least to have make recommendations, recommend.
Yes. Yeah, that would be. That might be. That might be useful.
I, that's.
Yeah.
Mine's a good. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
And and these questions, so
Time.
In full disclosure, I put these together, just as examples, not that you would ask all of these questions, but some examples if we wanted to get a little more information to include on our forms or or through an interview.
We gotta be careful, which, well, I would recommend you be careful in what you put there. Some of the suggestions for imprisonment of a person's rights, some of the requests that were made tonight. So I think we we should look into some of those before we take action with it, like before this board thinks actually.
You mean requested a public comment, not requested in the list?
That's correct.
Understood.
Public comment. All right, some of those.
You know, I'm hard pressed to see comments. I wish them, but certainly, yeah, we can, these may not be the perfect questions.
Does this town legal have any idea of any of these being appropriate and inappropriate? Certainly, when you hire an employee, you actually do background checks and that, or any of these kind of committee appointments are at the level where we need to consider about liability reasons, having a background checks.
I would say that that is not typical, but I can certainly ask around if folks do that, take a more procedural step. As far as the questions asked, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bailey, but I think the question you're referring to asking was during public comment, Ken Grant suggested asking, are you a citizen? Is that, that's a question you're concerned about, not these proposed questions. And so I, the Town Council did review the Appointments to Board procedure. If the Select Board were to add a interview process, I could certainly seek legal guidance, but I I envision no concerns with taking additional steps to vet the appointments the Select Board are making.
It's so good to stand here to see all these people. Be careful to see all the people that put their name into turn around house of the town. It's good. I mean, I can remember years that Select Board had no opposition. You know? You just, you got it because you you would volunteer to be there. So I mean, it's really great to see this.
Good, a good point. We'd probably need to discuss this once with new board. Then make a decision, maybe just a time after that, as opposed to making a decision on the tenth of April with the new board. Member, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to consider as we, as we start on this process. Any other discussion? In that case, uh.
Only, I would ask to review your public comment. Statement and amplify it somewhat so that other people can understand it better. That's all I can say on that. It is, it is a good statement, but maybe it should be amplified a little bit so it'll work better. Could be. You know, you know where I'm coming from.
I know, exactly.
I know you do.
Yeah. All right, yes. Select Board Member reports of committees and other reports and concerns. Part at the end. Want to go first?
Conservation Commission has been a little quieter lately. They've reviewed a few proposals that came from the Planning Board. They're not sure if they will meet this week or not, just again, because it's been pretty quiet. Energy Committee need to meet. One of the big advancements for the Energy Committee is getting their website updated. And so Leah Harrington, one of the Energy Committee members, has put a lot into getting what we came up with as a group consensus to include on the website, then worked with Honor Tiffany wanting to do to actually get Leah so she can make updates and stuff onto the website. So we're happy with how that's going to go on. And they're moving forward really quickly with a lot of their projects. They hope to come to the Select Board to present on the Community Power Coalition and what that might look like for Barrington. So that's gonna be, I think, in the very near future. And they have someone from Revision Energy coming at the upcoming meeting to present on municipal solar installation possibilities.
Planning Board has not met since our last visit. They're going to meet tomorrow evening. Technology Committee also has not met since our last visit. The Master Plan Steering Committee met this afternoon for land use. So this was taking information from the electronic survey that went out and the listening session for the community and looking at that data and kind of trying to come up with goals and objectives for each of those. So we talked about main themes that came up, rural character, recreation, open space, business development, and gathering spaces. So those are four big themes that came on the survey. So there's not a public document yet, but that will be coming, will be up there.
Thank you. Uh, Jim, do you have anything from Rick?
I do not.
Okay, School Board meets tomorrow. ABC's done our thing. And Transfer Station Committee will meet before the end of March. Fortunately, I won't be able to make that meeting, but hang on. An emphasis on trying to get more community involvement in recycling, composting, that sort of thing. There's lots of suggestions out there for possible going to schools, also having a session on composting, a sponsor either through the laboratory or through in the transfer station as spring comes on. Most of what we've been talking about in Transfer Station. Any other questions concerning this? Very good. Now it's time for the second public comment session. I'll remind people that we'll state your name, address. Excuse me, you're limited to three minutes. Again, one time. Not necessarily expecting an answer from the Board or the town administrator. Okay, Mr.. Let's see, who's that, John? Oh. Oh, that's him.
Rick Walker, twenty-four years, Fire Chief. I just want to reiterate what his argument said tonight. Thank you, George. You and I didn't always agree on every issue, and that's okay. We're not supposed to. But I always felt you at least listened to what I had to say, whether you agree with me or not, and thank people for the issue. Agree with me more than you disagree with that. So that made my job of glory to you. I want to thank the board that's sitting here. It's a, it's a tough job to try to keep ninety-five hundred people, do what's best for them within the budgetary constraints that tax payers can afford. You know, Fire Department has the most needs of any department, the engine. Certainly, I I appreciate what's going to try and decide with, to have so much pie, you know, how to get it, everybody. Thank you, and for the people that are still listening, get out there and vote, they vote, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to take the opportunity to thank this board, Connor, Tiffany. Made my job so much easier, sometimes a little bit difficult, but as the chief said, I always believe that there's politics and there's friendships. And I hope nobody turns around like some have in the past. Got the two mixed up. So I really appreciate that. Also want to take the time for all the department heads that are here now and those that have come forward, all the employees that were here now and those in the past making my job easier than sometimes not easy. But I really appreciate everything and also from the voters that had support for me over the years to put me into speeches. Again, I'm not your typical politician, but I really want to thank everyone. I mean, everybody for doing what they have for me, and thank you very much.
Thank you, George, for what you've done for us all. Thank you. I I should mention on Transfer Station that thank the employees who came in yesterday. Decide to close for the Transfer Station on Saturday because of the snowstorm. But they asked the employees if they would come in on Sunday and they agreed to come in. I don't know how much business we did yesterday, but I appreciate their efforts to come in and try to make that a little better.
I echo that as well.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to reaffirm this.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bailey makes a much better turn. Thank you for a second, Mr. It's not wait, this. All those in favor now, we have to do it by my person, Mr. Gibson.
Capello.
Bailey.
Man, sure, I.
Sokosha.
Thank you. Closed.